We're ready when you are, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome to the special meeting for the LAUSD Redistricting Commission for Wednesday, September 1st at 6:30 PM. Today, we're holding a public input hearing in school board member District 5 to gather testimony of community of interest. Before we continue the meeting, and welcome today, by the way, we'd like to have us both a Spanish and Tagalog interpretation announcement. We'll begin with Tagalog.
Maganang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Ako po'y magsasalin po ngayon sa pagkakasunod po na sa Tagalog. Magsisimula po tayo sa pagpupulong po na ito. Oras po alas 6:30 po para po tanggapin ang mapangpublikong komento at ang mga salobin po. Maraming salamat.
Thank you. Now in Spanish?
Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos a esta reunion en la cual se estará tocando el tema de la redistribución de el distrito escolar unificado de Los Angeles. Le pedimos a todos aquellos que necesiten interpretación en español, vaya a la parte inferior de la pantalla donde usted podrá elegir español para que de esa manera usted escuche el intérprete simultáneamente. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. So, thank you and welcome for being here. I'd like to welcome you all for this hearing on communities of interest. My name is Luis Sanchez. I'm the chair. And I'm going to ask my different commissioners to introduce themselves. And so, including being the chair, I'm also an appointee of school board member Monica Garcia. And I'd like to welcome you today and love to listen all the community of interest public testimony that you give today. Thank you for being here once again. I'll go to the vice chair. I'm Bree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here today. I see our attending numbers rising. I'm looking forward to all of the input. My name is Andrea Amberiz. I was appointed by LA City Mayor Eric Garcetti and look forward to conversation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Can we go to Commissioner Waite?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm Barry Waite. I'm a councilman from the city of Lomita, which is in the southern part of the district. And I was the appointee then Board Member Vladovic and now Tanya Ortiz Franklin, 7th District. And I also wanted to mention, I had a lengthy phone conversation this morning with DeeDee Watts from the District Office. And also to let you know that we're trying to put together a workshop for the District Office staff to better understand redistricting, how it works and such. Hopefully, that would be an interesting thing and look forward to hearing what people have to say tonight.
Commissioner Gruel?
Good evening, Wendy Gruel. I'm an appointee of Nick Malvoine, school board member. Happy to see so many attendees as well tonight.
Commissioner Dahan?
Good evening. Thank you in advance for the grace for having the video camera. I have my two kids climbing on me, so I appreciate the visual privacy this evening, but looking forward to listening. I'm an appointee of City Council President Nury Martinez and very excited for the turnout today, as I am also a resident of Board District 5 and happy to be here and communicate with you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can we go to Commissioner Hernandez? Oh, you're on mute, Commissioner.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Christian Hernandez.
You cannot take a stand on this. I'll leave you dial.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Excuse me. Andrew, I think you forgot to assign Andrea as a simultaneous interpreter. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. No problem. And I was appointed by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti. Happy to be here and thank you so much to everyone who has joined us. I look forward to hearing your public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lundquist?
Hi, everyone. My name is Dr. Lorraine Lundquist. So grateful to see all of you here tonight and looking forward to your comments.
Commissioner Franco?
Good afternoon, everybody. Dr. Wilma Franco. Looking forward to hearing everybody's feedback tonight. And I've been appointed by Council President Nury Martinez. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. And as with Commissioner Franco joining us, we've just hit form, so I have to now ask if there's any expert communication to report. I know we heard from Commissioner Waite, but any other expert communication to report? Hearing none? Okay, so now I just want to, just as a reminder, as today's community of interest, even though the focus of today is Board District 5, we welcome comments from all districts. And in every meeting, we've heard not only comments particularly to that district that we're conducting a forum around, but also from all districts. So, we welcome comments from all districts. And if you have any comments to say, please share them during our public comment section. So, once again, right before we begin the presentation on redistricting, is can we do another public announcement in Spanish and Tagalog? This time, let's start with Spanish.
Buenas tardes nuevamente a todos los que ocupan interpretación en español. Puede ir a la parte inferior de la pantalla donde va a haber un icono, como un globo o un icono de una esfera en la cual usted podrá escoger el idioma español para escuchar simultáneamente esta reunión. Muchas gracias de antemano y un recordatorio de apagar sus micrófonos si no están hablando. Gracias.
Andrew, is that, I think we have some, is that you? Oh, there you go. Thank you, Andrew. So now can we do the announcement Tagalog?
Maganang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Ako po si Rose. Ako po'y magsasalin po ngayon sa Tagalog. Meron din pong isa na nagsasalin. Simultaneous po at para po sa pagpupulong po na ito. Oras po nagsimula alas 6:30 po para kunin pong pangpublikong komento po ninyo. Marami pong salamat.
Thank you. So now we will provide you a video presentation that will talk about the education on redistricting, the commission and our process in 15 minutes or less. So, Andrew, please begin the presentation.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder to all the panelists to mute yourselves during the presentation so that we can, we can hear, so everyone can hear the audio. Welcome to the LAUSD Redistricting Commission's Public Input Hearing. The LAUSD Redistricting Commission is composed of 15 members, seven appointed by each member,
four appointed by the Los Angeles City Council President
and four by the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles. The commission has elected myself, Luis Sanchez as chair, Ms. Andrea Ambreys as vice chair. To date, we have had 14 meetings to organize ourselves, establish our procedures and processes, and hire staff. We have also created two standing committees. The outreach committee co-chaired by Wilma Franco and Elizabeth Johnson and the data and mapping committee co-chaired by Ana Teresa Dehan and Barry Waite. The committees meet on a regular basis to discuss issues under the purview of each committee. This hearing is part of the first phase of soliciting public input in our work. There will be many other opportunities. We are committed to providing the residents of the Los Angeles Unified School District with full opportunity to participate in this process. We are holding seven public input hearings prior to the development of any maps. Once we develop an initial map and approve it for public distribution in late September, the full commission will hold a second round of hearings during the first week of October to receive further input from the public. Our final map must be completed by October 29. Once our map is finalized, we will then go to the City Council, which has until December 31, 2021, to adopt the final map. We are making redistricting software and data available to the public so you may submit your own recommended maps. We also are making the information we gather available online through our commission website. as well as providing the public the opportunity to submit testimony, comments, and maps online. We encourage all LAUSD communities and stakeholders to engage in the redistricting process so that communities have equal access to political representation. How and where districts are drawn can shape a community's ability to elect representatives of their choice. Before we begin receiving your comments, the city attorney will begin, provide a brief overview of the redistricting law and criteria that we are obligated to follow. That presentation will be followed by the member of our data and mapping committee who will explain the concept of communities of interest and how this information is crucial to the success of our work.
On behalf of the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, we welcome you to this public hearing of the LAUSD Redistricting Commission. Our office's role is to provide legal advice to the city, including this commission, throughout the redistricting process. We would like to take this opportunity to discuss several important laws and legal principles that apply to redistricting. The Los Angeles City Charter requires the City Council to redraw the lines of the LAUSD's seven Board of Education districts at least once every 10 years. The charter creates this redistricting commission to advise the City Council on the drawing of LAUSD Board of Education district lines. The charter requires the redistricting commission to obtain public input, prepare a redistricting proposal, and present the proposal to the City Council. Several important legal criteria govern the redistricting process. The equal population principle. Board of Education districts must contain as nearly as practicable equal portions of the total population of the Los Angeles Unified School District. This principle is established in the City Charter and also in the United States Supreme Court's one-person, one-vote decisions. The United States Constitution's equal protection clause. The United States Supreme Court has held that race cannot be used as the predominant factor in drawing district lines such that traditional redistricting criteria are subordinated to the considerations of race. The Voting Rights Act of 1965. The Voting Rights Act prohibits voting practices which result in a denial or abridgement of the right to vote on account of race, color, or language minority status. Redistricting plans must be analyzed under the Voting Rights Act to ensure they do not deprive minority voters of an equal opportunity to elect representatives of their choice in violation of the act. Traditional redistricting criteria. Federal, state, and city law have established several traditional redistricting criteria, all of which shall be considered to the extent feasible when drawing district lines. What are the traditional redistricting criteria? Contiguity. All parts of a district should connect. Compactness. Districts should be geographically compact. Existing boundaries. Districts should utilize boundaries such as geographic, street, and political boundaries and conform to high school intended zones. Communities of interest. Districts should preserve neighborhoods and communities of people sharing common interests. More information regarding the laws governing the LAUSD's redistricting process are available on the redistricting commission's website. Redistricting2021.lacity.org/LUSDRC. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. The city attorney has just provided a brief overview of the redistricting law and criteria that the commission is obligated to follow in the redistricting process. As a member of the data and mapping committee, I want to share with you the current LAUSD Board of Education district map adopted in 2012. There are four ways for the public to provide input into the commission's process. The first way is to attend a public hearing like you are doing today and tell us what you'd like to see in a map. The second way is through the public comment forum on our website. The third way is to submit your map to the commission and the rules and procedures for doing so are on the website as well. Lastly, the commission will be providing an online mapping tool to help the public draw their own maps. We will now address the concept of communities of interest and how this type of public input is crucial to the success of the commission's work. As the city attorney mentioned, traditional redistricting criteria consists of maintaining compact districts, drawing contiguous districts, observing natural boundaries, and respecting communities of interest. While the first three are easily identifiable, protecting communities of interest is typically the most subjective and controversial of the traditional redistricting criteria. The concept of protecting communities of interest is to draw boundaries in a manner that preserves communities that share common interests and that should be included within a single district for purposes of their effective and fair representation. There are many types of common interests that may identify a community of interest. For example, communities may share common housing patterns, urban, rural, or suburban. Communities may share a common culture or language. Communities may be defined by their neighborhood, their neighborhood council, or by the location of cultural, religious, or educational institutions. Communities may also be defined by the location of geographic boundaries or features such as a city, parks, lakes, mountains, or freeways. Certain public services like public schools, public transit, the Los Angeles Police Department, or the County Fire Department may also help define a community. The commission will be using a wide range of information including census data on income level, educational background, housing patterns, same-sex households, cultural and language characteristics, employment and economic patterns, health and environmental conditions, crime, schools, and other common issues. The commission will also consider city planning maps, school attendance zone maps of the Los Angeles Unified School District, transit maps of the Los Angeles Metro, and neighborhood council maps, as well as other maps and geographic information. While all of this written information is critical to the commission's work, so is input from the public. The commission has prepared a public comment forum on communities of interest. If you would like the commission to consider a particular community of interest, we invite you to complete and submit a public comment forum on our website to speak at this public hearing or to submit your written comments to the commission.
Thank you again for attending our meeting today. To contact the commission, you can reach us by email, phone, on our website, and you can follow us on social media. On our webpage, the Google Translate button in the upper-right corner is available to translate the website into multiple languages. On our homepage, you can easily RSVP for a public hearing, join any live Zoom webinars, and provide us with public comment with the click of a button shown in the middle of the page. This website is where we will publish our draft map by the end of September, as well as the final recommended map and report to the Los Angeles City Council by the end of October. The homepage menu also allows you to access the commission's documents and tools. Our purpose and value statements are also posted on our website, outlining the commission's commitment to creating a transparent, equitable, and data-driven process that centers students, families, and communities. We also make available the video and audio of all of our meetings on the video/audio page. On another page, you can also view the accompanying detailed minutes from previous meetings. We will post transcripts following all public hearings on our website approximately two weeks after each public input hearing. Under the Community Engagement section, you may view the working timeline of our commission, which outlines the tentative schedule of our efforts and indicates the dates by which we will complete our work. The public comment page under Community Engagement is where you can RSVP for a public input hearing, easily submit written comments, or you can email us at lausd.redistricting@lacity.org. Additionally, beginning in September, our online mapping tool on the MapTitude software page is where you will be able to draw suggested maps to submit to the commission. This page also provides the rules and procedures for presenting a map to the commission at our commission meeting on September 15. On the Agenda Schedule webpage, you can view all of our meeting agendas and related materials to stay updated on the commission's work in progress. Currently, the commission is conducting only virtual meetings following state and local guidance. We hope you visit our website at redistricting2021.lacity.org/LUSDRC. And we hope you participate in future meetings with us.
We are holding seven virtual public input hearings between August 18th and September 1st before we begin the process of drawing and publishing a draft map. Every public input hearing will have Spanish interpretation available using the Zoom interpretation button at the bottom of your screen. We will also provide interpretation in 12 other languages if we receive a request at least 72 hours before the meeting. When providing comments in any language other than English, please pause every two sentences to allow your interpreter to interpret your comment back to you. Feel free to contact us by email or phone and don't forget to check out our website and follow us on social media. Now we will move into the public comment period of the meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak before the commission will have up to three minutes. Please select the raise hand option to speak and wait to be called on. When we call on you, please state your name and the boundaries of your community of interest as an introduction to your comments. Once again, thank you for attending today's public hearing for the LAUSD Redistricting Commission and for participating in this very important process.
Welcome back from the presentation. You know, we've been joined by two other commissioners. I want to see if they can introduce themselves, who appointed them, have any brief remarks, as well as any expert communication to report. We could begin with Commissioner.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Heather Repinning. I was appointed to this commission by Mayor Eric Garcetti and I have no expert communications to report this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez-Luzdesma?
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Ivette Lopez-Luzdesma. I was appointed by Council President Nury Martinez and I do not have any expert communications to report.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So, let's do.
Luis, before we start, we're having a little issue with the Tagalog interpretation channel, so if you can give me a minute to try to figure out the settings.
Okay, it's fine. Well, I wanted to do an announcement. That shouldn't be a problem in doing the announcement. Just do an announcement, once again, in Spanish and Tagalog to explain how attendees can email or call into this meeting. Let's begin with Tagalog.
Good evening, everyone. Just Tagalog interpreter. Everybody hear me? My check?
Yes.
Hello.
So, Andre, I'm going to move you over to consecutive. I got Rosemary doing simultaneous now, so why don't you go ahead and do the announcements as Luis prompts you?
So, Andrew, I think there's a confusion. So, who's doing the announcement right now? To the meeting?
So, because of the interpretation channel issues we're having, I put Rosemary over as the simultaneous, so Andre Parlata is going to do the consecutive.
Okay.
Why don't you remind him what you'd like in the settings?
Yeah, if you could just let folks know on how they could access the interpretation button as well as how they could call in.
Yeah, po pwede po kasi dyan. Yung para po sa pagsasalin, may ano po dyan. Mapipindutin po dyan para po sa pagsasalin, po para po sa Tagalog.
Excuse the interpreter. I don't think Gilbert is on the Spanish channel. He has been moved to the English channel. I think they moved him by mistake. Yeah, Andrew, because we've been hearing some translation.
Yeah, he should be back on now.
Okay, he's back on in Spanish. Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and go ahead in Spanish. Yes.
Nuevamente, un recordatorio para todos aquellos que quieran participar en lo que es la aportación pública. Usted puede dar sus comentarios al poder a oprimir la mano virtual. De esa manera, se le va a escoger y usted puede tener su micrófono y de esa manera, a recordarles de dar su interpretación o más bien su comentario. Dos oraciones a la vez para que el intérprete lo pueda hacer. Si usted está en el teléfono, puede marcar 669-254-5252 y luego el número de identificación es el 161-077-4991 y de esa manera usted va a oprimir estrella 9. Lo van a localizar, le van a dar el comentario y estrella 6 para activar su micrófono. Nuevamente, esas son las instrucciones para que usted pueda participar su aportación pública esta noche. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Andres. So now we will move into the public comment portion of the meeting. I will pass it over to Gladys, who will give some instructions.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez. In conformity with the Governor's Executive Order N2920, March 17, 2020, and due to concerns over COVID-19, the Los Angeles Unified School District Redistricting Commission meetings will be conducted entirely telephonically. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via Zoom webinar on the items listed on the agenda should click on the raise hand function to request to speak. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via phone on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 161-077-4991 and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. At this moment, we do have members of the public that want to give public comment today and I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney for further direction for the public.
Streffy, you're on mute.
All right. So for people calling in on the telephone when it's your turn to speak, you'll get prompted by somebody reading off the last four digits of your phone number or other identifying information if you're calling with a blocked number. At that point, please press star 6 to unmute yourself. And for everybody who's speaking, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you're speaking Tagalog or Spanish, the translator will translate and will stop the clock while the translator is translating, so you'll still get your full three minutes. The translator would be very appreciative if you would speak slowly and stop every couple of sentences so that they can translate. If you're a Tagalog or Spanish speaker and you want to hear the translation that has been explained, you should be on the Zoom link. As far as what you can talk about, anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that has to do with redistricting doesn't have to be about the fifth district. The only other thing to note is that we unfortunately get some speakers who say some pretty vulgar things, occasionally racist or sexist things. We do not condone it, but we can't do a lot about it. Members of the public, if you don't want to hear that when it comes up, turn the volume down on your computer, move the phone away from your ear, and then come back on later. For members of the commission, you unfortunately have to put up with it. And with that, we are ready to begin taking public comment.
Thank you. Now we will go to the first public speaker. And that'll be caller with the name Marisol Rosales. Can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Marisol Rosales. I'm a member of Community Coalition and I was born and raised in south-central Los Angeles, which is considered spa-stick. Like I said, I was born here and raised here and I went off to college up north and came back. And now I have a family of four kids and I take them to Southgate for school to provide a better education for them. So I feel like we like our community, but we definitely need more resources in the community. So I would So I would like for you guys to consider not splitting up our district because we definitely need as many votes as possible to provide more resources for the community. I really, I grew up here, I go to church here. My family goes to church here. We enjoy our community. The best thing about our community is the people that live here. So I definitely don't want to split up or like, yeah, pretty much split up the district because that would mean that we have less votes for our community. So that's the main thing I wanted to speak about today. And yeah, I think I will give up the rest of my time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Brian Connor, can you please unmute yourself?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Connor. I live in the Gardena area. I try to attend as many meetings as I possibly can. This redistricting meeting came, I came across through the City of Angels website because my children and my family have chosen to do the online programming for COVID reasons. But again, with LUSD, and I'm trying to get this from the start to see if this format's redistricting. First off, trying to get into this meeting or be made aware of this meeting is kind of difficult because my schools didn't advertise these meetings. The links that you have posted on your webpage don't connect to this meeting. You have to do everything manually by going into Zoom and doing it yourself. But that's an ongoing thing with LUSD. LUSD district tells you one thing, then local districts tell you another. And then when you go to your schools, they do something completely opposite of what you have been told by district or been informed by local district south. So redistricting, I don't exactly know what it all entails, but for the city of Gardena, from my experiences with the schools here, it's been a trying situation. So if Gardena is going to stay the same, my only recommendation as far as redistricting it is actually having an accountability and an oversight that's not run or organized by LUSD. It has to be an outside agency. Because I feel right now, in this aspect of life, that LUSD is becoming an autocracy, that they should not be policing themselves and being able to do, get people in trouble who don't deserve to be in trouble. And I just, I think there should be more accountability on LUSD's part other than just saying, sorry, we're following the rules, when we know the rules as parents that we observe on campuses that are being broken. So redistricting isn't going to solve a problem that I know of, but if it's going to give more money to help these local schools prevail, that would be great. But technology is our future, so I can't express how much more that LUSD's improvement, if anything they need to improve on, it's communication and involvement. And you guys fail at that. So thank you for allowing me to vent, and you have a wonderful evening.
Great. Thank you so much for your comment. Next caller by the name Jennifer Goldstein, can you please unmute yourself?
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us tonight. I have three children in three different LUSD schools. I am the education representative to the Encino Neighborhood Council. If you could zoom in on districts three, four, and five, that would be great. I did speak two weeks ago at the first commission meeting. I did so as a private citizen. Since that time, the ENC General Board has met and approved a motion to submit to the commission. In the interest of time, I'm not going to try and read that. Here, we're just submitting it to you in writing, and I will simply summarize. I really want to focus on the criteria that we started out with from the city attorney. I don't think anyone could argue that District Four meets the criteria of compactness as it stretches from the valley over to Toluca Lake and all the way down to West Chester. Encino stretches across districts three and four. So geographically, the issue of boundaries is not met. But most importantly, what we really want to focus you on is the high school attendant zone aspect of boundaries. We have five elementary schools. They span across districts three and four currently. And our feeder pattern is into middle schools and high schools that are in districts three, four, and in the case of Reseda High School, five. And so in the motion, we name all the specific schools. But really, I just wanted to speak tonight, and we want to urge you collectively in our motion to undo that, to keep Encino intact in terms of the feeder pattern with the neighbors with whom we share that pattern as one board district. And I can cede the rest of my time.
Great. Thank you so much for your comment. Next caller by the name Ofelia Ryan, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, yes. My name is Ofelia Sofia Ryan, and I am a member of the People Block. I am a People Services and Attendance Councilor in Local District Five, which is east. And I have lived in South Gate for about fifteen years. My communities usually consider working class, lower-middle class. We have a lot of people working as construction workers, domestic workers, and there are some with advanced degrees. We need a lot of help in our community because we have few places for mental health and for healthy start centers. My community speaks mostly Spanish. This is a community of immigrants. And what I have learned from attending several meetings is that we want our community to be together with Carahai, Maywood, South Gate, Huntington Park, and Boyle Heights because we have everything in common. We have the same ethnicity, the primary language spoken is Spanish, and the neighborhood have the same celebrations and traditions because of our ethnic backgrounds. So at this time, Local District E, or Five, is composed by the North, where you have the Anglos, the people who have the education, the degrees, and the money, and then Southeast Los Angeles. So we are opposites. So we are asking you to split us, to keep us together with Boyle Heights so that we can have what we need and our voices will be represented because there is a lot of need in our community. And usually, the way that we are right now, the North speaks, and the South doesn't have enough support. Having a board member office in Huntington Park doesn't help when there are no resources put in South Gate in our communities. So please break us up and take into consideration our communities and our needs and put us together with the Spanish speakers in Boyle Heights so that we will be able to have better access to services, better access to educations, healthcare, and that we will be able to be one voice. So thank you for listening to me. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Marta Cabral, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello?
Hello?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marta Cabral y pertenezco a la ciudad de Bellegarde. Soy miembro de Innovate Public Schools. Can I hear you? For me.
Okay. You can introduce it. There we go. Thank you, Marta, for stopping. Can you start again?
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marta Cabral y pertenezco a la ciudad de Bellegarde. Soy miembro de Innovate Public School, pero tengo mis nietos en South Gate.
Hello, my name is Marta Cabral. And well, I'm part of Bell Gardens and Innovative Schools. But however, my grandchildren, they go to South Gate. Proceed.
Okay. Para mí es importante que la comisión mantenga unida a mi comunidad, la cual está rodeada por Vernon, Maywood, Walnut Park, Bell, Los Ángeles, y South Gate.
It's very, very important for this commission to understand that it's very important for our committee, our community, to be unified. And this involves burning Bell and so many other areas in the community.
Para que juntos tengamos el poder político para abogar a asuntos como la seguridad, los servicios, recursos, y hacer acceso a la educación y oportunidades que ofrece una buena educación.
See, this way, we're going to be powerful, and this way we have that political power in order to have access to the education that we need, the resources, and so many other things that will help us have a brighter future.
Además de que necesitamos un representante que provenga de la comunidad del suresta y que responda a nuestras necesidades.
This is why we need a representative on the southeast area. This way, he can go ahead and address our needs and then go ahead and represent us.
Como estaban diciendo ustedes antes, es compartir los intereses comunes como el mismo lenguaje, la misma educación, los mismos valores, para incluirse en un solo distrito.
Just like I heard before, people mentioning that we want to value our differences. We want to value our education, our culture, and this way our districts are valued this way.
Y quiero dar las gracias por darle la oportunidad de compartir con ustedes mis inquietudes y para mejorar nuestras comunidades.
Thank you so much for your time and listening regarding my concerns in regards to the community. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Next caller by the name Katie Mesa, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Kathy Mesa. Soy un padre líder en con el grupo de Innovate Public School y vivo en la ciudad de South Gate.
Hello, Ms. My name is Kathy Mesa, and I'm a parent from Innovative Public Schools. Proceed.
Me gustaría que ustedes tomen en cuenta las necesidades de nuestra comunidad a la hora de la redistribución de los nuevos mapas de la mesa directiva de LUSD.
I would like for this committee to take in consideration our needs and our community when you are planning these different redistricting maps.
Mi comunidad es mayoría latina, gente obrera, con muchas ganas de salir adelante y con grandes sueños para nuestros hijos.
My community is composed of Latinos. And well, they're just workers that are working every day, hard workers, that have dreams and want the best for their children.
Es por eso que es necesario para mi comunidad tener poder en la mesa directiva que realmente abarque los siguientes temas en educación.
This is why I am sharing these concerns with this committee so that when you're doing the redistricting maps, have these very important topics at hand. Proceed.
Especialmente en estos tiempos extraordinarios de pandemia y con una crisis en la pérdida de aprendizaje a distancia.
Have this in mind. We are living in extraordinary times, very crucial. We have a pandemic, and more and more, we have this crisis of distance learning epidemic where people or students are falling back on the grades.
Independientemente de cómo se redistribuyen los distritos, me gustaría ver en mi comunidad igualdad entre distritos, las mismas oportunidades para todos los estudiantes, tutorías de calidad para que nuestros hijos puedan superar esta crisis en educación.
So whatever the results are, keep these in mind. Make sure that the results can demonstrate equity among the different districts. Same opportunity for every student, the same tutoring that is accessible for every student so that they can have success in regards to the education, and this way it will be equitable.
Los padres estamos dispuestos a apoyar cualquier decisión que traiga beneficio a nuestra comunidad y a nuestros futuros líderes.
Parents in our communities are ready to support any decision that this committee makes, listening and having in mind that we here in our community, we have the future, and we have these leaders of the future, and we need this education.
Este tiempo debe ser de unidad y no de división. Nuestra comunidad ha sido duramente afectada en esta pandemia, y no queremos que nuestros hijos sufran las consecuencias de decisiones mal tomadas.
This is the time that we should be unified even more than before, not divided. We want to make sure that you understand that our community was hit very hard during this pandemic. And this is why we trust that you would make the right decisions in these hard times.
Proceed. Deseo de todo corazón que al distribuir los nuevos mapas piensen en los millones de niños adoptados y en las necesidades que tiene nuestra comunidad latina. Gracias.
So in conclusion, I just want this commission to know that when you start giving these maps out, finalized maps and distributions, keep in mind millions and millions of children that are affected by this pandemic and that you make the right choice. Thank you so much, and thank you for your time. Muchas gracias. Señora, I forgot her name.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Norma Diaz, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, good evening. Do you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Norma Diaz. I live at Walnut Park.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Norma Diaz, and I'm from, I didn't get that, there's some issues. Say it again, where do you come from? I didn't hear.
From the city of Walnut Park.
The city of Walnut Park. Say it.
Yes. In mi comunidad, la mayoría de gente es personas latinas muy trabajadoras, y nosotros estamos pidiendo que a la hora de hacer las.
Excuse me. Allow me, Norma. Can I sit quietly, not moving the microphone, because it's very static and I can't hear you? Can I keep it fixed and not move the microphone? I just went ahead and told her to have her phone fixed in one position because she's making a lot of movement and affecting the sound quality. Proceed.
Yes, I would like to consider that when you do the new mapings, you should take into account the resources that exist, especially in my community of Walnut Park.
In our community, we have very hard workers that are working there. And our community Latina, just keep in mind that when you're thinking about distribution and the borders of these districts, keep in account Walnut Park and its needs. Proceed.
When dividing these regular mapings, our community is cutting down resources. It's a community that has very few resources, and it cuts down more resources.
What I noticed is that when these lines are dividing the districts, what happens to our district? Less resources. And the next time they do this, less resources. This continues. Proceed.
And I would like to take into account that so that resources can be provided to our community.
So please take in account this situation, and instead of less resources, more resources next time. So make it so when you make these lines and distributions.
Like the Plaza Alameda that was removed from our city of Walnut Park.
Example of this, Plaza Alameda, they took this away from Walnut Park.
In the context of the school district, I would like it to stay as it is, but it should have more equality between the two. pero sí que hubiera más igualdad entre los recursos también a estas áreas de nuestras comunidades.
Regards to the school district, I would like for this to remain the same except for the equity. I would like to see more equity and more resources where it is needed.
Igualmente la educación que sea de más alta calidad, ya que los niños de estas áreas siempre son los que tienen la más pobre educación.
I would like higher quality of education. These kids, it's time for them to receive a higher quality of education and not the less quality education that they're receiving now.
Y por último, ya que dijeron que el consiglo dará las últimas decisiones para hacer estas líneas de las mapas, sí me gustaría que tomaran mucho en cuenta también las opiniones que estamos dando nosotros porque no quisiera que solo al final hablemos y ellos decidan ya o ya tengan sus planes de lo que van a hacer. Gracias.
So in conclusion, I just wanted to mention that you take in account our needs when making these decisions. I heard that the committee will be making the last decision when they're making their maps and taking in consideration the public. So please do so. Listen to our opinions. Let our voices be heard and keep in consideration. Don't make a decision and just say, "Okay, we listened to the public, we're set." No, take in consideration what we're saying and make that choice. Thank you so much for your time.
Muchas gracias. Thank you for your comment. Next caller by the name Julie Morales, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, hello commissioners. My name is Julie Morales and I'm a lifelong resident of South Gate. I've attended LAUSD schools and I've lived in my community for 25 years. My little brother has also recently graduated from South Gate High School and my nieces and nephews are currently LAUSD students. My community of Southeast LA is made up of South Gate, Huntington Park, Bell, Bell Gardens, Cudahay, Walnut Park, Maywood, Linwood, Vernon, and Florence Firestone. It is predominantly a working-class community. My parents have been factory workers in the area. The college graduation rate in Southeast LA cities is on average below 14%. The median household income for this region is approximately below $60,000, which is much lower than other parts of LA Unified Region. Moreover, in 2019, approximately 17% of South Gate residents were below the 100% of the poverty threshold. I myself and my little brother used lunch tickets to eat breakfast and lunch during our time at LAUSD. About 55% of South Gate residents are non-citizen immigrants as well. For Southeast LA cities, the uninsured rate for residents falls between 8% to 14%, which is frightening because the region was identified as an epicenter for the COVID-19 pandemic last year. So many of my neighbors are essential workers and were unfortunately affected while working to feed their families. It felt like everyone was risking their lives to survive and everyone leaned on each other in their shared reality. I shared this American Community Survey of 2019 estimates to make a case as to why the Southeast LA cities share challenges and interests. I would like for you as commissioners to consider keeping these cities together and redrawing of your district maps because of the emerging regional identity that is occurring and the shared needs of residents, especially students, parents, families in the region. By keeping the schools in these communities together in one district, our representatives can continue to be champions for what our community identifies are real issues that will contribute to the well-being and success of our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Saul Mejía, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Saul Mejía and I'm a long life resident of Panama City in the San Fernando Valley. Many of you already know me and I got a few concerns and that I would like to share with you guys and please consider them. The first one is outreach. I found out about this meeting thanks to one of the constituents, but I did not get any information from anybody. And many of you know I actually lasted 10 years in my local neighborhood council and I'm also the president for the chamber. I would expect a little bit better outreach, you know, when it comes down to these matters for the community to actually be informed about what's going on. So I did not get any information. I haven't seen any posters. I haven't seen anything in the community that indicates there will be a meeting. So I'm here thanks to one of the constituents. So please consider actually doing better job on outreach. Second, I'm a bit concerned about how the commission is selected. I have no idea how do you guys select the people within the commission, but it looks like half of the staffers are new immigrant in the office and the other half of the staffers are, you know, Mayor Eric Garcetti's office. I would like to see the community and actually people, they live every day within the community to be part of it so that they can actually have people that actually understand the needs of the community. Second, aside being on the meeting, I noticed that the person who's translating in Spanish really doesn't translate properly. He's not really actually doing it the way that he's supposed to and I know professional translators. So it bothers me that a lot of the people who are giving their messages in Spanish, they're not really getting the full message across because they're not being represented properly. So please consider that in the future. I'm sure the city can afford a better translation. Second, another issue that you guys said that it can be solved, actually, they should have been solved already and they can be solved and I don't think changing the district really is going to make a difference at all. I went to Central Middle School, I went to Monroe High School, I've been to all the local schools. And with that said and done, I know how education used to be. I'm a product of the LAUSD, you know, system and back then we used to have really amazing education and just like most of the residents, I'm really retarded that a lot of the programs got cut, including technical jobs. Back then they used to teach you wood, they used to teach you mechanics, they used to teach you so many other trades that people need now. And as it is right now, we complain about the homeless situation. That's because we feel cannot afford to actually get a college education. You no longer can actually get a decent job and a decent pay and it's due to education. I'm running out of time, so I'm gonna be short, but please consider improving the education and keep the district as it is. Actually, this is the best we ever been in the past 20 years. This is practically the best we ever been. I would hate to see any changes into the district and of the maps as it is. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Salvador Diaz, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Salvador Diaz, can you please unmute yourself?
We should move to the next speaker. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Salvador Diaz y yo vivo en la comunidad de Walnut Park, California.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Salvador Diaz and I live in the community in Walnut Park area.
Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar este día ante los comisionados y para poder redistribuir estos distritos que beneficien a mi comunidad.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak before this committee in regards to the redistricting of our community.
He vivido en esta comunidad por los últimos 54 años y he notado que mi comunidad la mayoría es de habla hispana.
I lived in this community for more than 54 years and I noticed most of the community does speak Spanish.
Tenemos la misma cultura, asistimos a las mismas iglesias, asistimos a nuestras tiendas que tenemos alrededor, ya que en Walnut Park no tenemos bastantes recursos.
So the community, we share the same culture. We all gather, we all tend the same church. We all do things together because we don't have many resources.
Por lo cual, yo le pido a los comisionados y a las personas que están en esta oficina haciendo estos cambios por medio de las peticiones de los residentes.
I asked this committee and I asked this office when making these changes, take in account the opinions of the residents in this area.
Que no dividan a mi comunidad, al contrario, que nos traigan más recursos. En nuestra comunidad solamente tenemos dos escuelas, una escuela charter y una pública, pero no tenemos muchos servicios como los servicios de bomberos, una biblioteca, diferentes y diferentes servicios que necesitamos como comunidad que pagamos taxes.
Please don't divide us. Please don't take our resources away. We only have one charter school and one public school. And out of these two schools, we also don't have other services that are very needed. For example, fire department, a library, and other services. We're taxpayers here and our needs are not being met. Proceda.
Estamos para trabajar juntos con el distrito, pero que nos traigan lo que es más importante en nuestras comunidades para nuestros hijos, los padres y nuestras comunidades, una educación de alto nivel.
We're willing as a community to work with the commission here, work together, but keep this in mind, what we want and that is higher education for a brighter future for our children.
Que tengamos una igualdades como tienen otras ciudades, que nuestra voz como padre se escuche, que no nos ignoren como padres porque también somos educadores de nuestros hijos.
So all we ask for is for equity and that our voices be heard, just like in other districts. The voices of these parents are being heard. Please don't ignore us. Ignore us. Listen to our needs. Let us be heard. And remember, we are also educators for our children.
También necesitamos leyes nuevas porque las leyes y estatutos que tenemos de nuestro distrito es muy antigua y no refleja las necesidades que hoy día estamos pasando por la pandemia y estamos pasando cambios que están muy antiguos y no nos benefician en la educación.
You see, what we need is new laws, new policies that can benefit us. Are the ones that are in place at this time, these statutes and laws and policies are so antiquated. They don't, they're obsolete. They don't pertain to us, especially now that we have other needs. We have a pandemic and well, we need these new policies so that they could address the issues that we are going through at this time. These laws are very antiquated.
Y yo les pido a los comisionados, también les pido al distrito y a todos los que han tomado esta decisión, que lo tomen con claridad y transparencia para que llegue ese dinero con claridad y transparencia en beneficio de nuestros hijos para el futuro de ellos, de sus familias y su comunidad. Muchas gracias por darme la oportunidad y saludos para todos.
And in conclusion, I would just like to add that these districts, these members of this committee and the people are in charge to just listen to our concerns and to make sure that you're transparent. That's very important. Make sure the money goes to the right place where our kids will have higher and better education than what they are receiving. So thank you so much for your time.
Muchas gracias. Thank you for your comment. Next caller.
Gladys, can we do an announcement for language? Just making sure because I know we've had more people join in the last 10, 15 minutes.
Sure.
So can we do a Spanish announcement first? Yes, this announcement pertains to the hard access, the Zoom and the phone. Hard access and also raise your hand if you want to speak. Yeah, yeah.
Muy bien, es solamente un recordatorio a todos aquellos que están en teléfono, puede marcar al 669 254 5252. El número de identificación es el 161 077 4991. Usted puede levantar su mano virtual estrella 9 y luego prender su micrófono estrella 6. Esa manera estaría activado para que usted pueda participar. Ahora, si usted está con nosotros virtualmente en Zoom, simplemente puede levantar su manita virtual en la parte inferior de la pantalla. Usted hallará una manita ahí donde dice raise hand y luego espere que le den el comentario y simplemente prende su micrófono en la parte izquierda de la plataforma donde usted podrá sudar su comentario y recordatorio de hacer dos oraciones a la vez, frases cortas y solo agradecemos de antemano. Muchas gracias.
Can we do the announcement altogether?
And then point, if you want to zoom, you can click on the camera. You can tap your camera. Then there's Star Nine. How do you do it? 9, then there's a size. If you want to speak, tap your camera. You can click on the screen. Tap your camera. The camera, the symbol of the camera or the raise hand. Maybe you can ask me.
Alright, thank you. So Gladys, proceed.
Okay, thank you, Chair Sartis. Next caller by the name Eddie Martinez, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Eddie Martinez. I'm executive director of Latina Equality Alliance. We do work with LGBTQ. I'm also vice mayor of Huntington Park. My community of interest is the southeast area, which includes Vernon going down to the city of South Gate. We are a community of immigrants. We are LGBTQ. We are communities of faith. I'm here to advocate for a regional representation, for a regional district that represent us. Currently, we're with Northeast Los Angeles. That's a high propensity area of voters. And so what happens that we never get to have representation from the southeast. So I hope you really think about that, consider that. It's about putting us together, keeping us together, and we identify more with East L.A. Bull Heights and South L.A. You know, we don't have a Trader Joe's or Whole Foods and people who are representing us are from those folks have access to the stores. Nothing gets Trader Joe's. I like Trader Joe's, but I think we need a better representation for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Yonel Maris, can you please unmute yourself?
Unmuted. Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for having me. Echoing some of the people who made comments about the LAUSD redistricting. I live in the San Fernando Valley, particularly in the northeast San Fernando Valley. I've attended schools here, public schools at LAUSD and some of the concerns I'm hearing from other individuals are that they don't want their cities or their neighborhoods to be broken up or their district line to change because it may harm their schools, their students. And I understand where they're coming from. Regarding the LAUSD is that I believe that in certain locations, especially underrepresented areas, mostly inhabited by Latinos and African-Americans, the schools in those areas are not really, compared to more wealthier areas, are not really doing well. But even though over the years they have made some progress in terms of STEM programs, magnet programs, but I do think that one of the issues that I've seen is overcrowding and large class sizes because speaking from experience, when I attended LAUSD schools, one of the things that I experienced is overcrowding, large class sizes and many of the teachers there were unable to keep the students in line and controlling and they had difficulty of teaching and I had a hard time learning. And one of the things that I would like to see is smaller class sizes and more funding for programs that will help elevate students. Um success rates and be better prepared for college right after high school. Because many times, many of the professors, when I graduated from high school, I was ill-prepared for college. I had to retake all my English, math and science courses from the beginning. And we need to invest more in um programs, especially in underrepresented areas to make sure that students, especially. I emphasize this a lot, especially for students with disabilities. Because society right now are talking about racism, about police brutality. But I hardly hear people talking about students with special needs, with disabilities, either physical or learning disabilities. Or perceived disabilities and I strongly urge that the LAUSD, you know, somehow focus more on. Ensuring the students with disabilities have a good outcome in the future. So they will not struggle right after graduation, that they will be able to be self-reliant, self-sufficient. And I don't know how the districting will have an effect. But maybe hopefully they could balance it out in terms of economic security for students in underrepresented areas.
Your time is up. Thank you so much for your comment. Next caller by the name Kiantay, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, how are you guys doing today?
Good, go ahead. Okay, I think we lost that caller. Uh next caller by the name Michael Menjivar, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi everyone, my name is Michael Menjivar. I was born and raised in the Sun Valley area. I have in the Sun Valley area, Board District Six. Uh just just north of where the map is currently showing. I have three older brothers and all of us attended. Our local LAUSD public schools grew up just right across the street from where Julie Cornstein Elementary currently is. Um now that we're all older, I have a lot of nieces and nephews and cousins that currently attend LAUSD schools. Uh almost entirely in in the east San Fernando Valley. Um I currently uh I'm calling in as a resident of North Hollywood and and as an LAUSD alumnus today. Um so just I just moved a little bit south. Um I'm calling uh to speak. Uh I'm hoping that uh understanding that there may be changes in the boundary lines. Uh hoping to keep Board District Six at least intact as much as possible. I think um this is a this is a heavily Latino district. Um uh most of the families and students around here speak primarily Spanish. Lots of bilingual, lots of dual language programs here in this part of the valley, which 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 are are needed. We could probably use some additional dual language programs. Um I think that it does, uh to me, it makes sense that this is a Latino seat. Um I I think that the 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 boundary of the four or five freeway generally makes pretty good sense for for dividing the San Fernando Valley. Um and I also think that uh maintaining the, just generally maintaining the east San Fernando Valley as much as possible. Uh makes sense. Um and so that is uh that is my comment. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Aida Vega, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Aida Vega. Soy residente de la ciudad de Huntington Park, más de veinte años. Soy madre líder de Ignove Public School y me gustaría que el Distrito Cinco continúe manteniéndose juntas.
Hello everyone, uh I, good evening everyone, my name is Aida Vega and I am a resident of Huntington Park. And I've been a resident for more than twenty years. Um also um involved in uh in District Five as a mother leader in this organization. Proceda, Aida.
Me gustaría que el Distrito Cinco continúe manteniéndose juntas.
Juntos con qué?
Juntas como siempre, como antes.
I would like for District Five to continue unified, not divided, as it has always been united.
La pandemia ha cambiado la vida de todos y ha golpeado a mi comunidad. Los más afectados son todos los estudiantes de kinder a doce grado por la pérdida de aprendizaje.
This pandemic, permitame, this pandemic has changed the lives of everyone. It has definitely changed the lives, especially the students uh from K to twelve. Uh this distance learning has definitely um made a lot of students fall back on their grades. Proceda.
Todos los adultos somos responsables de todas las decisiones que tomemos con la pérdida de aprendizaje. Su comportamiento de los estudiantes va a depender de todos los adultos, de los padres de familia, maestros, escuelas, distrito escolar. De todos nuestros líderes de las comunidades.
So it's all up to the adults here, the responsible ones, the ones that are making the decision. The results and the outcome of the this crisis of education and fall back on the grades. We are uh responsible as adults for the behavior of the students, adults such as the teachers, the school districts, the uh president, the principals. And everyone, all the leaders in the community, we are the responsible ones. Proceda.
El distrito necesita ayuda porque no va a resolver ni va a solucionar la pérdida de aprendizaje de todos los estudiantes. Porque hay ahorita una gran necesidad. Necesito.
So the district needs help, the district definitely needs help. They will not be able to solve all the issues in regard to the learning crisis at this time?
Necesitamos el apoyo de todas nuestras bibliotecas de las ciudades que brinden y provean servicios académicos, socioemocional, tutorías. Para que todos los estudiantes de kinder a doce grado acudan a estos servicios. Y ellos continúan preparándose para ir a los colegios, a las universidades y en el futuro ellos no sean una carga pública.
So what we need at this time is for all the libraries, all the accountability of all the libraries and all the other organizations. Uh to to help out and bring these resources to the communities for that way our students can receive the socioeconomic help they need. Tutoring, which is very important in our schools for our elementary kids and middle school students. This way, we can make sure that they are prepared for for college. Then they are prepared for universities and we don't have these issues in our community. Proceda.
Nuestros estudiantes son el futuro de este gran país y ellos deberían de ser ayudados ahora. Y ojalá y me encantaría que nuestros líderes pensaran en ellos en este tiempo. Y hicieran buenas decisiones para que nuestros estudiantes sigan con sus sueños, con estudiando, preparándose. Para que ellos un día sean otra, otros líderes, otros nuestros líderes futuros grandes para nuestras comunidades.
These children are the future leaders of this country. And you leaders at this time, think about these children. Think about uh the education that they need to be prepared. So that they can go ahead and fulfill their dreams of being the future leaders in our community.
Todos los padres estamos comprometidos y estamos dispuestos a apoyar y ayudar. Gracias a nuestros líderes por su gran trabajo y arduo en este tiempo difícil. Y los apreciamos y nos gustaría que ustedes ayudaran a nuestra comunidad y gracias por escucharme.
We as parents are ready to support and we are dedicated to work with you. And at this endeavor, we are ready to support you. Uh we want to thank you. I want to thank for all your support and everything that you are doing, you know, the leaders of today. And I just want to make sure that you take in consideration what we are saying here today and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment, muchas gracias. And next caller with the last three digits, zero nine six, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Últimos tres dígitos, cero noventa y seis, o primas estrellas seis, para activar su micrófono. Muchas gracias, si habla español.
Pardon me, put your, maybe between the symbol down, that's size. For people to say something, maybe tagasalin, put a tagalog.
Once again, caller with the last three digits, hello?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hey, my name is Norma Isabel Dirgen. I grew up in Los Angeles County. I went to Brothers Elementary, my primary school. And then we moved to Los Angeles, South L.A. I went to middle school, Jefferson High School. At the age of sixteen, my parents brought me back to uh San Fernando Valley. And I, since then, I live over twenty-four years in the city of Selma, District Seven. Um we must, we must to maintain the Latino culture and the characteristic of the east San Fernando Valley. The four oh five freeway is one of our most important tools. The most important, the most important, the most important that I came to advocate is for District Six. I have minor children and I wouldn't like to separate the District Six from our Districts. We. We should consider to maintain the same, the northeast San Fernando Valley. And like Ms. Norma Diaz say in Spanish, hope that you consider our opinion. And it's not that you just have the plans and you're just doing this to keep us all happy. Like a little kid when you're gonna give him a candy and go shut up. That's not, that's not, that's not how it is. We matter and we have a really good representative in our District Six. A representative for District Six went to very good school. Uh she got very good education and we, I have seen the change in our school districts. And I'm here again to advocate for District Six, for our four oh five freeway. And we must maintain our culture and hope you guys can consider it. Thank you. And if you don't understand my English, I'm willing to say in Spanish and someone can translate me. I've been living over thirty years in America. I don't know what happened to my English. But if anybody wants me to talk in Spanish, I'll be more than happy.
No, you did well. Thank you. Yes, yes, we do. Thank you very much for your comment.
You're welcome.
Next caller with the last three digits, five one three, please, please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last three digits, five one three, please use star six to unmute yourself.
The last one to say, that's the last number, five, one, three. For people to say something, pardon me, put your, maybe between, and the number six, for people to say something.
I believe the caller is unmuted. You can proceed with your comment.
Por favor, procede con su comentario.
Vamos, comentario. Comentario, there you go. My pocho's Spanish.
Cinco uno tres, los últimos tres, por favor, su micrófono ya está activado, así que simplemente comience a hablar.
Why don't we move on to the next speaker and come back to them?
Okay, we'll do so. Okay, next caller by the name Jazz, can you please unmute yourself?
Okay, good evening everyone, my name is uh Jazz or Justin Uvaldo for the record. And I reside in the city of Wana Park. My little nephew attends school in the city of Bell, just like my sisters and I did at one point, both, also LAUSD. Today I speak for your uh your future LAUSD nonverbal student, future special ed student in LAUSD for that matter. My little nephew Omar. Our southeast L.A. community is really struggling um when it comes to the lack of appropriate cultural sensitive special education resources, amongst others. As a person that shows up in this space with privilege, I ask you to please not separate our families any longer. Our government has done so much harm in our communities at this point. That now dealing with this issue of redistricting would only cause more harm to our community. Separation for us um takes a different toll than it would be other communities. Because our experience is very real and it happens on a daily basis, that being ICE and police brutality. So there are a lot of elements that come into play. It's just not a matter of just redistricting. It's a matter of keeping the community together for safety. So I ask you to please look out for my community, our special needs community specifically. Because we rely on one another for support for babysitting services, because we trust one another. We are a very tight-knit community, so I ask you please stop separating our families. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Glenn Bailey, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Glenn Bailey, can you please unmute yourself? Okay, we will go to the next caller. Caller by the name Aiden, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh hi, my name is Ada. I recently graduated from Crenshaw High School in District One. I'm a proud resident of Crenshaw, of the Crenshaw District and a youth leader at Community Television. Even though the city spends a lot of money for gas on the helicopters that fly over my house every day. I still think it's a really good place to live. I like that the people who live here like me, looks like me, respects me and looks. Out from being a citizen. In my opinion, we share our, we share our roots, dreams and history. And we have a lot of pandemic that impacted us in the back. But even during the pandemic, it has only brought us closer and it's, and it made us, made me and my siblings.
I'm sorry, Aiden, uh this is the interpreter speaking, if I may. Aiden, it's very hard for the interpreter to interpret. You're cutting out. I'm not sure what location you're in. Um but we're having issues interpreting what we can hear. Sorry about that.
Oh yeah, um. I'm on my way home from work. I'm, I'm on my way home from work, so I'm not sure if you can hear me properly. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, I would say, um, me and my siblings. Okay, okay, I would say, um, me and my siblings in my, in our, um, community that we live in. And we say that we share our hopes and dreams in the community we live in, as well as our history. And I was saying how the pandemic, even the pandemic, that's hard. To stick together. And how we have deep roots here in the Crenshaw District, the roots that should not be cut and cut out during the redistricting process strategy.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Candida Centel, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Candida Centel, can you please unmute yourself? Hello? Candida? Candida Centel, you can go ahead and proceed to comment.
We, we should maybe go to the next speaker and we'll come back to them.
Okay, we'll do so. Next caller by the name Beyond Taylor, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, proceed.
All right, hello, my name is Beyond Taylor. I'm a, I'm a Lamar Park resident and I'm a proud graduate of Crenshaw High School in District One. And I'm also a youth leader at Community Coalition. I'm calling today to urge you all to keep my community together during this restricting process. I mean, Limer Park is a really special place to me. I love the music and its celebrations and the people who live here. For the people that live here, it's, it feels like one big family. It makes me feel safe and very welcomed. It makes everybody feel welcome. Keeping my community together ensures that the next generation of young people can inherit the legacy of Limer Park. And so they can learn and experience a community that truly celebrates black lives. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Perla Delgado, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Mi nombre es Perla Delgado, pertenezco a la comunidad de Huntington Park en el Distrito Cinco y pertenezco también al grupo de Innovate Public School.
Hello, everyone. My name is Perla Delgado and I'm a resident of Huntington Park, District Five, and also Innovated Public. Proceda.
Yo he vivido en esta comunidad alrededor de ocho años. Para mí es muy importante que la comisión mantenga unida a mi comunidad, la cual está rodeada por la ciudad de Vernon, Maywood, Wano Park, Bell, Los Ángeles, y South Gate, entre otras.
I've been a resident here for eight years now, and it is very important for me, for this committee to keep in consideration that our district maintains that unity and not divided. For example, there's Vernon, there's Bill Gardens, Los Angeles, South Gate, just to mention a few around that area.
Para que juntos tengamos el poder político, para abogar por asuntos como la seguridad, los servicios, los recursos, acceso adecuado a la educación y oportunidades para nuestros, para nuestros hijos, que son el futuro de ustedes y de nosotros.
If we're unified, then we will retain this political power that is so much needed. This way, we could address the issues of security, safety, resources that we need, education, higher education, and the opportunity for our children to have a brighter future and be the future leaders, our future leaders.
Además de que quiero que tomen en cuenta que necesitamos un representante que provenga de la comunidad del sureste, ya que él compartirá nuestro idioma, nuestra cultura, y escuchará y responderá a nuestras necesidades.
Also, I would like for you to take in consideration that we need a representative from the southeast area. Someone with, that understands our language, not only our language, but our culture. And so that we feel that we are going to be heard when we give our opinions and raise our voices. Someone that understands our needs as well.
Quiero dar las gracias por estar aquí con nosotros y escuchar nuestras necesidades y opiniones y deseo que trabajemos juntos por el futuro de nuestros hijos. Gracias.
I want to thank you all for listening to our needs and also our opinions. And I look forward to working together and working out this issue for the well-being of our children. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much. Next caller by the name Robert Montalvo, can you please unmute yourself?
Hey, good evening. Am I coming in okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I am a resident here in the city of Southgate. And looking at the map, it's District Five. I, I'm a very huge advocate for our cell area, which is Southgate, Cudahy Bell, Huntington Park, Maywood, and Vernon. So as I look at these maps, I'm wondering, you know, it's almost kissing the one oh five freeway and it stretches all the way down to the one thirty-four. Now, those two areas are totally different demographics in there. And I don't know how the representative for this school district can go back and forth between these, these two freeways. So as I, as I look at it, I compared, I compared this data to voting data. And you know what? On the other side, on the north side of this district, the voting is almost five to one. And then, so I come to the conclusion that this is classic gerrymandering, the way this district is routed. I mean, it just goes around east LA. And it seems like this district is mostly done this way for political reasons. I mean, you cut across a portion of east LA. And, you know, I just look at the map and this doesn't make sense, you know, and the ones that suffer are students here. Most of them are Hispanic. We do have a portion that are African American and Asian as well. But what happens is in the more affluent areas, they seem to be getting all the resources. In the meantime, you're creating a cycle of failure for our children here in our area. And that's not acceptable. And this has been going on for years. And the only reason I can see, because the way this map looks, is purely political. And I think you guys should take that into consideration when you decide to, whether or not to redistrict these lines. Because the way it looks, it makes no sense. It only benefits somebody that's wanting to hold an office. If you cut it up the way it should be, we would be part of the east LA area. I mean, it makes sense to me. But the way you have it now, our children are suffering. The numbers don't lie. We're in the bottom ten percentile every year. We have the highest high school dropout rates. I mean, this is no secret. I mean, LAUSD puts out these numbers. And that's the issue, this gerrymandering that's going on, that's basically cutting the arteries of our, our children's future. Thank you for listening and have a great evening.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Glenn Bailey, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello. Hello, this Glenn Bailey.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I wanted to speak regarding the valley districts. Specifically, District Three, the northern portion of District Four, the western portion of District Six. Yep. So I, I'm concerned that the communities of interest are not being honored. When you look at the communities, for example, of Encino with the, which is really divided by the one oh one Ventura freeway on that map in front of you, at least most of it, with this northern part being in one district and the southern part being in another district, Tarzana, you know, Woodland Hills divided. You know, the, the schools that feed into the high schools don't cross Mulholland Drive. And so really, and, and the schools that, for example, feed to the, you know, Birmingham High School, Reseda High School. I mean, they all feed from the, below the freeway there, or, you know, from a different, most of them from a different district. So that, that the argument that the boundaries were drawn based on the feeder high schools makes no sense as it relates to this part of the, the district. So I would, I would make a request that the West Valley District be the entire West Valley, north of Mulholland. Number one. Number two, the carve out up to a little bit further north on the four oh five for Lake Balboa into Reseda and then North Hills. It looks like surrounding Monroe High School. I'm sure that's not the, the, the area that's drawing from the community attendees from Monroe. I'm sure it's much larger than what's shown on there on the map. So I'm not sure what sort of gerrymandering happened ten years ago. But I think you should be able to do a better job this time with regards to keeping not only the feeder schools intact with the high schools, but also in terms of communities of interest in the valley, because honestly, Woodland Hills, Tarzana, Encino, to be grouped with a district that's otherwise not in the valley and south of Mulholland, just, just, you know, makes no sense whatsoever. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Luis Mora, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody in the commission, the, the interpreters doing the hard work. I speak Spanish, so I can understand what that is. I'm an educator in Los Angeles. I teach in, all the way down in Wilmington. But I grew, born and raised in Los Angeles. I went to an LAUSD middle school, La Camp Middle School, which is in Hollywood. For me, I just want to echo what I'm hearing a lot of the families and people saying about here. I'm hearing a lot about unity, wanting their neighborhoods to be continuous and not divided. I'm hearing people talking about resources being cut, or not cut, but struggling with inequitable access to resources. As an educator in Wilmington, in that sort of area, which is predominantly working class, a lot of very, very humble families working hard to survive in the city, I would like to say, yes, I agree with everybody here. And as commissioners, I think you have an incredible responsibility building these maps. Because they're not just maps of neighborhoods and cities and schools and communities, but there are also opportunities for salvation, for opportunities for growth. But at the same time, there are also opportunities for people to take advantage of others. A lot of these maps, these maps create the districts which are elections. And those that are elected to the school board have incredible power that they wield in terms of money, influence, and the distribution of resources. So for example, you know, the school district races that have been happening recently have been the most expensive school board races in the world. They, that it's never been seen before. And why? Because people see an ability to take money, to take power, to essentially treat others unfairly so that they can benefit for themselves. So these districts are not just maps and neighborhoods and cities, but it's a battlefield. And our students and our kids that were, that are in my classroom and that are in the classrooms of all of these schools and all the parents that, that they go home to, they're, they're pawns in this game that we see here. So I hope that all of you take that into consideration. I'm hearing people saying the word gerrymandering. I don't know if these were gerrymandered or not, but they definitely look incredibly suspicious from a lot of different angles. So please understand, there's a lot of dark money being funneled into these school board races, which these maps draw, which means that there's a lot of people that are essentially wielding power that aren't from these areas that are now, that are reaping rewards and taking advantage of the communities that, that are supposedly being represented by these maps. So I hope all of you have a good evening and really ponder what you are doing, creating these maps, because it is going to have a long lasting impact on the city and country. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller with the last three digits, five one three, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Por favor de usar estrella seis para activar su micrófono si es el cinco uno tres y habla español.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I was on mute. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Diddy Torres. I'm a board director of the East Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. I do not recommend redistricting our schools in east LA or our community. I still live in East Los Angeles. I attended all LAUSD schools, Fourth Street Elementary, Griffith Junior High School. I'm a graduate from Garford High School. And Garford High School right now is averaging ninety-four percent graduation rate. East LA is not a city. Our, our Chamber of Commerce is considered an unofficial city council, and we're not a city. We have no local voice or representation. To further dissect our community of East Los Angeles in any way gives us a divided voice. Redistricting would not benefit our community or our students. East Los Angeles has, has had the most COVID nineteen cases of any one community in all of Los Angeles County. We support our community like no other. The East LA community pride is so, supporting school, let me say it again. The East Los Angeles community pride supporting its local schools runs very deep. Thank you so much. Please consider that not to divide a community, not to divide a voice, empower our children, and our youth is our future. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Candida Centel, can you please unmute yourself? Caller by the name Candida Centel, can you please unmute yourself?
Puede activar su micrófono Candida Centel?
El último que se llama, candida Centel. Pueden ustedes poder decirle, pueden ustedes poder decirle?
Once again, Candida Centel, can you please unmute yourself?
I am not trying to speak. Can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I never asked to speak. I apologize. I was driving down the street using the phone while I'm listening to the thing. My name is Candida Centel. I do not speak Spanish. I am not Spanish. And I didn't want to speak in the meeting. I just wanted to listen to, hear what was going on.
Okay, your hand was raised. That's why.
I know, and I keep on trying to lower it, but it won't lower.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you very much.
Okay.
With that, we do not have any other public speakers at the moment. Chair, some shit.
Let's wait a couple of seconds. If anyone else, oh, there we go. There we go.
Next caller by the name Maida Garcia, can you please unmute yourself?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maida Garcia. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí, proceda.
Este, eh... Dirijo un, un grupo de apoyo para padres con necesidades especiales y soy parte de los líderes de Innovate. A mí me gustaría ahora que van a redibujar el distrito que se... terminaran la con las diferencias entre las comunidades de mayor poder adquisitivo y que la educación fuera igualitaria en todas partes, en todas las áreas y que con los maestros y especialistas tuvieran mejores capacitaciones.
Gracias, Maida. Permítame.
Sí, perdón.
Está bien.
Sí.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maida Garcia and I do have a support group for parents for special needs and I run that that group in the area. I just want to just share with you the when the time comes for the different redistricting, keep in mind that we all have differences and put that aside and just focus on our kids and the needs that they have in different areas where the resources are needed. Siga, Maida Garcia.
Que se trabajara con tutores en las escuelas por las tardes para que los niños pudieran hacer sus tareas con apoyo, ya que en muchos muchos casos los padres están trabajando y ellos tendrían un mejor futuro.
I do have one recommendation regards to tutors at schools in the afternoons. Most of our kids do not have that support. So if there was these tutoring sessions, programs in the evenings and in that agenda scheduled, well, the our children would have that opportunity to have that support and tutoring. And this is because most of us are working as parents, we're working, and we're not there to support them when it's time to do their homework and have tutoring.
Y que en el área de educación especial se respetara el IEP dando una educación apropiada.
When it comes to IEPs or Independent Education Plan, I would like for you to make sure that that's respected, that that's something very, that has to be respected and make sure that all the needs are being met when you are programming an IEP.
Al nivel de la necesidad, con especialistas capacitados en cada área para beneficio de estos estudiantes.
And just keep in mind when there's therapists, specialists, and these areas and IEPs that you select the right specialist that could fit and are qualified to help in these needs. And all this is because it all comes down to the needs that are being met for these special education kids.
Y que se hablan los los distritos a la inclusión, ya que esto nos está dando en estas escuelas y nuestros hijos con necesidades especiales quedan marginados.
And also, these kids with a special education need to be included, not excluded. They need to be part of it, of the the whole plan, education plan, not marginalized to the side. So this is something that I would like to share as well.
Proceda. Y por último, el dinero que el por último, el dinero que se dio, que se maneje con una transparencia y que los padres sean notificados de cada cada dólar que se maneje en beneficio de nuestros estudiantes.
In conclusion, just the money that you are receiving, make sure that it is used for education purposes, be more transparent and for the parents to have more access as to how exactly you're using every single dollar that has been used. So that the parents have access to this. Where are these funds going? Thank you so much.
Eso era todo, Maida. Agradezco mucho su atención. Agradezco mucho la atención. Gracias.
Thank you so much for your attention. This matter.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much for your comments. Next caller by the name Maria, can you please unmute yourself?
María, ¿la escuchamos?
Claro que sí. Gracias. Muy amables. Ah, mi nombre es María. Primeramente quiero agradecer por esta junta informativa.
My name is Maida Garcia and I just wanted to thank everyone for this very informative meeting today.
María Contreras.
Contreras, disculpe.
Es okay. Y de igual manera a cada uno de ustedes por su atención, de escuchar nuestras sugerencias de nuestra visión sobre cómo nos gustaría ver por los próximos diez años los mapas del Distrito de Educación.
Just want to thank everyone and for taking time and listening to our suggestions and try to see our vision, how we see our districts in the next 10 years, how they're supposed to look like. In regards to education.
Sí, gracias. Disculpe. También quiero agradecer a Génesis que nos hizo el favor de darnos un taller a mí, a unos padres.
I also want to thank Génesis for the the help, the course, the program and that we received and also all the rest of the parents. We received this this tutoring or programming that she she went ahead and provided for us.
Gracias nuevamente, Génesis. En realidad es muy importante que nosotros como padres estemos informados de esto. Yo nunca había escuchado de estos mapas, pero al estar escuchando a todos miro las necesidades de que los mapas están trazados, pero en realidad la necesidad de las cada comunidad de cada uno de nosotros viene siendo las mismas y todas las escuelas venimos pidiendo lo mismo a gritos, recursos. Porque nuestros estudiantes son lo que necesitan, los recursos para impulsarse y salir adelante.
And I just want to thank Génesis again for these workshops and appreciate the time you made for us. Also, what I also add in regards to the maps, when they are being designed, make sure that you take in consideration the needs of the community. I'm sure this has been said over and over again, but we're trying to scream at the top of our lungs and being we want to be heard, that our students, the kids, they need the best resources so that these needs are being met.
Porque la igualdad y la equidad siempre se habla, pero la justicia para los estudiantes no se les da justicia. Nosotros somos los mejores abogados para nuestros estudiantes, pero el abogar a veces no somos escuchados.
We hear a lot about equity and justice and fairness. But when it comes to education, there is no equity and there's no justice. So we as parents have to advocate for our children. We are the ones that are supposed to be advocating for our children and students. And this is why I'm speaking today. Proceda.
Gracias. Miro que cada distrito tenemos mucho en común. Nuestro idioma, nuestras costumbres. Debemos estar unidos, unidos. Somos la fuerza, somos más fuertes.
I noticed that we have a lot in common. We have our language, we have our culture, we have so many of the same struggles and needs. So why not unify? And this way we're stronger.
Y de un modo o del otro tenemos que estar unidos para que nuestros hijos se impulsen y ellos son el futuro de yo estoy de acuerdo en muchos de los comentarios que hizo el señor Mora Luis Roberto Montalvo, Salvador Díaz, excelentes comentarios. Estoy en parte de lo que dijeron, me gustó lo que comentan y porque apoyan a los estudiantes, porque ellos son los que tienen que salir adelante.
So if we're united, then our children are the ones that are going to be benefited with with these this outcome. I heard of the comments of Mr. Luis Mora, Saul Díaz, and several other people that came up here and spoke today, and I do agree with what they were saying in regards to the situation.
Y pues nuevamente quiero agradecer por este miren, sé que es el último miren, después haremos otros mapas con ayuda de Génesis, que otra vez estoy nuevamente agradecida con ella y con cada uno de ustedes por escucharnos. En cómo queden los mapas trazados, espero que sea de la mejor manera para que todos reciban el mismo beneficio y la mejor educación para todos los estudiantes. Gracias.
So in conclusion, I just want to thank Génesis again for this workshop and the maps and the way she was helping us how to maneuver and coordinate. So again, I just want to thank this commission and listening to our opinions. And again, keep in mind, all of this is for the children and the better education for and quality education for our children and their future. Thank you so much for your time.
Muchas gracias. Thank you for your comment. Next caller by the name Marco Santana, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, hello.
Hello, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, hey, everyone. My name is Marco Santana. I'm a longtime resident of the San Fernando Valley. Born and raised here and lived in Board District Six in the Van Nuys area. I just, you know, want to thank you all for having the forum and allowing us to speak at this commission, at this meeting. I really want to say that, having grown up and lived here my entire life, seeing the change that the valley is going through and has gone through. I just think it's super important, you know, Board District Six stay as a strong Latino hold. You know, I know it changes and so on, but I really think that our our future, our kids, our, you know, next generation of leaders see that representation that typically wasn't always there and hasn't always been there. And I really, as again, I'm just saying again, I really think the commission must maintain the the character that is the East San Fernando Valley being a strong Latino hold. And, you know, essentially, anything from the 405 geographical kind of boundary, truly. As that's, you know, the area I grew up, that's where all the Latinos are. And I think it's super important to keep that. Again, I just want to thank you all. And just to say one more time, I just urge you all to keep the San Fernando Valley District Board Six together. Keep it a Latino stronghold and, you know, make sure that our kids are seeing their their representation and that we're getting the right folks in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller with the last three digits, one, eight, nine. Please use star six to unmute yourself. Caller with the last three digit, one, eight, nine, please use star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My bad. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Malcolm McKay. I'm a proud South Central resident, a student at Prince Hall High School District One, a member of community co-living. I live in the Lamarck Park area of Los Angeles and I have a lot of pride in my community. Our community serves as a beacon of black culture and history and a place that celebrates that the many accomplishments that black people have made in the arts, science and other fields. My community is my community is hidden and and there is, there is a strong sense of belonging and kindness. It is a shame that such a beautiful community suffers from oppressive conditions and policies. Students at my school do not receive the type of quality education that others do. Despite the not, my bad, despite the nationwide calls for racial justice and on top of that, we are being pushed out to make room for more affluent people moving in my neighborhood. Is being systematically systematically disabled, disabledized. This is not fair and this is not the answer. My bad, I'm sick, but that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name Marco Flores, Miramonte, can you please unmute yourself?
Good evening. My name is Marco Flores. I am a resident of Adams Normandy. I am a parent of three graduates from LAUSD, neighborhood council elected member, and I work at Miramonte Elementary School. I want to say I'm truly disappointed with the outreach that has happened about these meetings. This is one of several meetings that I have attended. And I keep inviting people, you know, as a neighborhood council member, our neighborhood council was not notified of the meetings, invited to the meetings, invited to comment at any of these meetings. As a member of Miramonte, as an administrator there, we, there was never any outreach for us to give our parents at all about what was happening, especially, you know, where we are on the border and of different school district areas. I don't know why. I was very proud of Commissioner Rapinoe, who asked, why don't we use schools? You know, to do the outreach at the last meeting. And I didn't want to comment, but I had already commented on something else, so they didn't call on me. But I don't understand why schools were not used. You know, as a parent, last year I used to get weekly phone calls from the district, you know, saying that Superintendent Butner was going to talk on Monday mornings. As a parent, I received from my schools multiple calls, you know, saying that something was happening or something was going on. My son was late to school. My son didn't go. All different things. And I know schools are busy because I am at one of those schools. I do special ed. Today was a very hectic day. But the district, Bodri, anybody can just push a button, record a message and send it out. Anybody can just do a text message and send it out to an area, a district, a board seat, the entire population. Anyone can use Blackboard Connect, which is our our communication system, Schoology, which all our parents and our kids are using, Parent Portal. There's so many ways and nothing like that was done. I hope that at the next step, once the maps comes out, there are further outreach. And I saw about these meetings on Facebook, which I do. And I receive weekly updates from from board member Gones, from Monica Garcia, from Tanya Franklin. And why aren't they publicizing these and sending out the information to our parents, to our schools? So I really hope, once the maps are done and you want true input of what should be done, please use our schools, use the communication system that has been used throughout our COVID times to tell the parents, please comment, to tell our communities, please comment.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next caller by the name next caller by the name Michael Beatty, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes, hello.
Hello, go ahead.
Last year, I completed an analysis of black student achievement that was titled the Black Zero Index that used test data from the website. And I also completed analysis of $150 million that was spent on needy schools in Board District One that had zero effect on any of the black and brown student achievement, especially with respect to mathematics. And in this analysis, having having to go through the numbers, I, you know, I never knew where the preponderance of black students were. But from this research, I found out that Board District One has the highest concentration of black students and black students of which are the lowest performing. So I looked at it and I've been, I've been to most of these meetings. I haven't always said anything. But I think that for for posterity, I don't think that we should redraw any of the boundaries of Board District One in any fashion that would dilute the voices of our community. And we do have a voice, as evidenced by this Herculean effort that we went through to try to buy the Prince Hall Mall, which is the commercial anchor of our community. And our efforts around that are to abate all this gentrification that's taking place. In a, in in the context of some 25 years ago, I was in the with a group of people who were working to break up the school, break up the school district. Now, I understand that these new boundaries may or may not exacerbate the dilution of of the concentration of black students. But my advice is, is that any boundaries that we change should be focused on the north side of the district as it exists. I'm believing that we get more cohesion if we use the 10 freeway for the northern boundary, because that northwest portion, it goes over to the 405, has nothing in common with the with the majority of the people that are, the rest of the people that are within those boundaries. With respect to the eastern boundary, the Harbor Freeway looks pretty good. But I don't think that we should go below the one, the 105, because really that's Gardena. And you can go down a little bit for West Athens, but Gardena is, is that clock right? What's going on with the clock? Um, but so there could be some kind of gerrymandering with respect to getting the black community that's over there in Watch Buller Brook. These actions were still adhered to the COI guidelines since we are saving communities. These actions were still adhered to the COI guidelines, since we are saving communities and we have these common concerns. We are the largest and only Black community that makes us unique, and ethnicity can be a factor. We have advocated for the purchase of mall, we're fighting to maintain our quality of life.
Thank you very much for your.
Really, that was three minutes?
Next caller by the name Rob, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, Rob Quon. Thank you for your time. I'd like to start by saying it's lovely to see you here, Mr. Fabel. I live in District Five, Highland Park specifically. I grew up about 10 minutes north of LAUSD's boundaries in Santa Clarita and got a really great K-12 education at all public schools. The only reason I had that opportunity was because I was in a different zip code. So I acknowledge I come from a perspective, a bit of privilege when I'm speaking on these issues, but it also left me with a belief that we can provide good quality public education. The whole reason I became interested in politics was the greatest AP Gov teacher to ever live, Mr. Pew, may he rest in peace. I have to say, out of any district in the city of LA, this district is the most crudely and unnecessarily gerrymandered district imaginable. We shouldn't judge districts simply by their looks or a single criteria like compactness, but this is a district that is gerrymandered in a way that serves no purpose other than to disadvantage one of the most underserved communities in LA County, Southeast LA. We have a lot of nonprofits in LA, a lot of community organizations, avenues for civic engagement. It's not the same in Southeast LA. They don't have the same kind of news coverage. They have their own struggles with local governments, just like we do here in the city of LA, corruption. But this district is drawn in a way that exacerbates that vacuum of leadership. Whatever you do, we shouldn't have this district that's drawn to empower wealthier communities that have lower LAUSD attendance rates at the expense of communities that actually rely on public education. These communities of South Gate, Maywood, Vernon, Bell, Cudahy, they need to be united with neighboring communities in a way that actually empowers them instead of stuffing them into a corner. I also wanna note a few things on, you know, district size. I'm sure you're realizing, like the city council, that it's really hard to draw good districts when you have so few options. And you have it even worse here with LAUSD, a population bigger than the city of LA with half the districts. You also have way more to consider than population or voting age, population, or communities, like which neighborhoods actually attend public schools and rely on LAUSD. So I hope as you kind of mull over, you consider maybe including that in your report to council as a recommendation for future consideration, as far as that conversation on increasing the number of districts in LAUSD. And I also think you are probably highly cognizant of how city council treated your maps last time around. And I think you should start thinking about which committee will receive it. In 2002, Alex Padilla, the then council president, created a five-member committee to hear the maps. Last time around, it was a three-member committee chaired by the council president. You know, we should have a more diverse committee hearing your maps, more voices, and more hands on deck, especially when they're gonna have a very rushed timeline and considering councils' maps as well as your own maps. So I hope you consider that as far as what kind of reception your maps get and maybe how you could encourage council to step up on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
That's the last speaker, right, Glass? So we could just wait a couple seconds, see if there's any more speakers. We'll raise our hands. Okay, I think we could close public comment now, Gladys?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
Okay, so commissioners, just wanna see if anyone has any brief remarks before we close the meeting? Any questions, remarks? I have a hand raised from Commissioner DeHahn.
Just wanted to thank everyone who participated today. It's great to see such a growing amount of speakers. Gracias a todos por sus comentarios esta noche. And those who are just listening on and who aren't speaking and just making sure we have a public accountability to this process and really wanted to also acknowledge the commentaries from across LAUSD, not just Board District Five and hearing concerns about Board District One and Six, as well as wanting to make sure that the Southeast cities get their fair representation. So thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner DeHahn. Vice Chair Brice?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to thank the community for coming out and giving us their comments. And specifically, I wanted to address some of the shared feedback around the outreach to different communities and to different schools. Hopefully, the community knows and is rest assured that we will be actively engaging our networks as well as our contacts within both the LAUSD system as well as other organizations. And we'll be kind of really building out additional outreach opportunities as we get closer to some additional hearings. So appreciate that people flagged that for us, and we will take that feedback back and really advance some of our outreach into the community. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments or remarks from commissioners? Commissioner Franco?
Hi, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank everyone that came out tonight. We really appreciate you being here. This is part of the process that's important for us, right, for the redistricting process. So thank you for everybody that came out and for all the great feedback and as Commissioner Brice mentioned, we appreciate all the feedback and we will take that into consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Nantes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to also echo my thanks to everyone who took the time to participate in this democratic process. Truly important to hear your feedback and for folks to be engaged. And I also just wanted to share that you have a number of folks here, who, including myself, are products of LAUSD, who still live in the community, so I know that you do have a voice and that we're here listening to all of you and are taking your comments seriously. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing and hearing you in future hearings. Have a good evening. Buenas noches. Gracias.
Thank you, Commissioner Nantes. We do have one more speaker that's kind of put there. Can we open up a couple comments for this last speaker?
Yes, we can.
Is that fine for commissioners? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Gladys.
Caller by the name Gilbert Berri, hold on one moment. Caller by the name Gilbert Berri Berrio Saval, can you please unmute yourself?
Good evening. My name is Gilberto Saval. I'm a resident of the San Fernando Valley. And I've served as a commissioner of transportation and safety for the city of San Fernando. I just wanna speak a little bit on the importance of keeping the character of the Northeast San Fernando Valley. It's Latino character. I do believe that the 405 is an important geographical line. And the east of the 405 should also stay together. The San Fernando Valley should retain their Latino character. It's important to maintain that congenitality within our community and it's a geographical area that has systematically been in place. And I just wanna make sure that you understand and that when you go back and do your due diligence, that you ensure that our community continues to stay together. It's imperative to make sure that we don't despair our community and separate our school district, like many other city council districts have been disparate. I know my district has been disparate very awfully. You know, when I grew up, my district belonged to one, and then now we belong to another district. And it's important to maintain consistency and ensure that our school districts and our children or students maintain that sustainability within the conjunction of one geographic area. So I hope that you take into account all of our comments, and then when you go back and do your due diligence, that you help protect and preserve the districts that we currently have, especially in the sixth district. It's a vital area of my community, and I just wanna make sure that you take that into account.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Great. Thank you, Gladys. So once again, commissioners, any other final comments before we close the meeting? I'm hearing none. So behalf of the commissioners and this redistricting commission, I wanna thank everybody for attending tonight's town hall hearing on communities of interest. You know, know that we're gonna value your public input as we kind of begin to develop and think about concepts and principles and developing maps as a commission together. Thank you once again for coming. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn? Second.
Yes, second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good night.
Banana chess.